February monthly. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors here with us in person and at home. At this time, we need to make an addition by having Mr. Jones phone in. Ms. Smith, would you lead us through that process?
Okay, so I need a motion.
I need a motion to allow Mr. Jones to be with us by phone.
So, a second.
Okay.
A second.
I did. She did.
Ms. Givens?
Coach Young.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay, so we have properly acknowledged that Mr. Jones is on the phone with us. Good evening, Mr. Jones.
Hello, everybody.
All right, at this time, we're going to have our Pledge of Allegiance up by Ms. Carter. Please stand and then our invitation by Dr. Tally.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Father, we bless you for all the great things, wonderful things you've done. God, we just pause to say thank you on the passing of a student from Anquan. The home-going service, thank you for all the teachers and friends who did all they could to make his mom and family have comfort. In addition, God, we thank you for the life and the passing of one of our community standard bearers, Mr. George Lester, and all of his children who were educated with and all the families who were educated in Martinville City Schools and have supported us for years with that graciousness. We pray that you would comfort them at this time also. And God, if there are many more who've lost loved ones this week, again, we pray that you would strengthen and comfort them because we're all one family. And God, bless the school board. They will make decisions tonight propelled by young people. We thank you for wonderful support as we enter the second half of the year. That you will continue to strengthen our students and our teachers, encourage them, bless them even as we may enter hazardous weather on tomorrow. And God, keep us all safe. These blessings were actually due in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Do we have any registered speakers? No. So I can't see guys or anything. I am vertical challenged. This evening, we have two community-focused presentations. The first one is going to be by Ms. Staples, who's come in to talk to us about the Fehe Teacher Supply Closet. Go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Tally, members of the school board. Ladies and gentlemen, I am Joyce Staples, a retired educator with 39-plus years of experience. And as I walked in, I noticed a lot of former students that I taught in middle school, high school, college, just a few years ago. Just a few years ago. I am the board chair of Fehe of the museum. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the teacher's supply closet housed at Fehe. I will not be before you long. I know you need to go get your milk and eggs. I did that before church yet. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Martinsville High School Alumni Association. The Martinsville High School Class of 1982 was presented with a challenge by Dr. Tally at a class reunion. And he asked those members who were present to think about Martinsville City Schools and how they could give back to the community that had produced such wonderful young people, right? So, the members of the class accepted the challenge and reached out to Fay Holland, who was the board vice chair at the time, who then reached out to me, who's the chair of the board. The Alumni Association wanted to sponsor a teacher's supply closet to be housed at the museum. And if you're not familiar, Fehe is the African-American museum. Mr. Henry Foster, who's our building and ground supervisor of one, built the shelves for the teacher's supply closet. So imagine December 27, 2024, Mrs. Bridget Carter and her husband Kerry, Mr. James Dallas and his wife Kamalita came to Fehe with their vehicles loaded down with boxes and boxes of school supplies. Granted, they had already shipped many from, you know, Amazon, but we stuffed the closet. Now, imagine my surprise, because I'm a former teacher and nobody bought stuff like that from me. I had to come out of my pocket, tissues, crayons, markers. Oh, my goodness. Paper, notebooks, book packs, everything that you can imagine that teachers need in the classroom and that teachers spend their own hard-earned money for. So it really was like Christmas. But I want to touch on three points tonight. Like I said, I won't be before you long. So why, why a teacher's supply closet? The Martinsville High School Alumni Association understands the profound impact the educators have on impacting the future. Teachers work tirelessly to support their students, often using their own funds to provide necessary supplies for the classroom. With that in mind, the Martinsville Alumni Association decided to establish a teacher's supply closet to provide essential resources for local educators. Now, the supply closet has paper, pens, books, educational tools with the aim of alleviating that financial burden that teachers sometimes incur. The goal is to ensure that all students have access to the materials that foster a positive and productive learning environment. The initiative reflects their commitment to giving back to the community that had supported them when they were students in the Martinsville City Schools. So what is a teacher's supply closet? It's currently an association-driven initiative by the Martinsville High School Alumni Association. However, the ultimate goal is for it to be a community-driven initiative designed to provide educators with free access to essential school supplies. The Martinsville High School Alumni Association is now being talked about as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization so that they can receive donations from the community. And you're probably asking yourself, how? How will the supplies be distributed to the Martinsville City teachers? So because this is from Martinsville students, former, you know, graduates, it's only for Martinsville City Schools. Now, I'm a graduate, proud graduate of George Washington Carver High School, and I have issued this challenge to my graduating class that if we wanted to start something in the county, that we could. But for now, this is for city teachers. The first distribution, supplies will be packed in book bags and will be available on a first-come, first-served basis for teachers who visit the museum. So come to the museum and see the exhibits there. The goal is to distribute 100 backpacks filled with educational supplies. So we encourage educators to take advantage of the opportunity to visit the museum and to pick up a backpack. The backpacks will be available after March 1st. That will allow our executive director, Charisse Hairston, to solicit students to get volunteer hours to help us pack the bags. Now, I used to be a Beta Club sponsor, so I know how important community service hours are. So as soon as she can connect with Ms. Callie to get some student names to come to the museum to pack the bags, we will have them ready after March 1st. So that is our point of contact, Ms. Callie. This is not a one-and-done project. The goal is continuous support to the Martinsville City Schools. And like I said, if county students want to do the same thing, then they might. Okay, but for right now, we're offering this opportunity to Martinsville City Schools to come to the Fehe Museum to pick up their backpack. And I know the day that Ms. Hairston gets those students to pack the book bags, you know I'll be there too, because it was just so exciting to see all those items. So anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much for housing us and helping get supplies to our teachers and with the class of 1982.
Yeah, that's absolutely. Ms. Staples, I just want to say thank you for heading this up even though you're from county. Much love to you. We have a strong alumni base. And as we're rebuilding things about the renovations that are going to come to the city schools within the next five years, easily within the next five years, I am somewhat amazed at the class officers who are just waiting for the blueprints and waiting for what we're doing. Captain and I have been working, Travis have been working on those steadily. So I'm excited about our alumni, what they propose to do to assist. So again, thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the United Way Tax Preparation, presented by Craig McCroskey. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks for having me back for my annual visit. I think I see a couple of new faces down here on the end. You don't know what I'm here necessarily to talk about, but next time, can we talk about taxes before we have Ms. Staples come up and talk about all the great things that they're doing? And before I hit taxes, again, Craig McCroskey, I head up our financial security programs at United Way, one of which is tax return preparation services that we offer. We also do a program called Dollars and Cents Reality Fair, where the high school seniors come in. And encourage you, if you ever want to come and see high school seniors trying to figure out how they're going to make their budgets work, come and visit us. We have, at the end of the month, we're doing it again. Last year, in 2024, we had 565 seniors that came through the program. And so Ms. Ege, I don't know if you did it in the fall, but if not, maybe it'll come up this spring if you're able to do it. So another program we've started, it's in its infancy, but we've been doing it now for a couple of years, is our eviction reduction program. This is where we partnered with the courts. We have funding from the state where we go in and help people who are going through eviction difficulties, figure out how to navigate kind of the court process. It's complex, it's confusing. We try to help, we can't advise people because we're not attorneys, but we help just kind of navigate and give them information on that. This past year, we assisted financially 96 households get caught up and hopefully avoid eviction and more than that, just through our court, what we call our court navigation. One of the other things that's been rolled out, we're now pushing out hard, is our, it's called Engage HCM. Engagehcm.org, it's a volunteer portal. I'm going to encourage Fehe to make sure that they put their volunteer opportunities out on this. So it's there to both help community service, nonprofit organizations, anybody that can use volunteers manage their volunteer needs. It's there for citizens to come and find out, where can I go volunteer? So we're very excited about that. So, but back to my point of being here, taxes, I'm going to end on that, I guess. But it's still some good news. So the program is structured so that we have volunteers who are certified, trained by the IRS, to come in and do tax preparation for people. This year, I think the limit is $67,000 on the household income. That's what we're regulated to do. Sometimes we're able to do a little bit more, but we reach out to the schools, both for staff as well as for families. So these helped us get this information, kind of in your virtual backpacks to go home so that parents can know about this. It runs from now until about April 15. Last year, we did over 1,800 returns, over $1.8 million of refunds coming back to these folks. And so we always encourage people, even if you think you maybe don't need to do a return, come on in and let's look at it, because there might be some funds here that you can access that you don't know about. The biggest thing for us is by doing this for free, we've estimated you save about $450,000 in tax preparation fees for these folks. So we're really, really happy with that service and glad to be continuing that. And thank you for allowing us to publish it through the schools.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. All right, moving along to... Mr. Jones, sorry. Moving along to the Wars and Recommissions, we have the FFW Teacher of the Year presentation by David Gilleran. Good evening.
Hi, Dr. Tally, member of the school board. I'm glad to be here this evening. My name is David Gilleran. I'm the fifth district commander of the Department of Virginia, veteran of foreign wars. Also, I'm a member of the local BFW post, 4637 Ford Stewart. Each fall, at the post, district, department, and national level, we select three teachers at elementary, middle school, and high school as Teacher of the Year. Post winners advance to the district. District winners advance to the state. State winners advance to national. And it's highly competitive. We have a lot of great teachers across the Commonwealth of Virginia and locally. It's my pleasure this evening to present the award for Teacher of the Year for elementary age group, Kelly Williams. So I ask Kelly and her principal to come up. I've known Kelly since she was in the fourth grade. Kelly, this is on behalf of District Five, Teacher of the Year to you. And congratulations, you had an outstanding resume and not only at the post level, but at the district level and at the state level. And if you ever move up to middle school, you can try again. But we encourage teachers to be nominated either from their principal or a family member or somebody from the school board can nominate at these three levels. And they go through the process. There is, at the end of the rainbow, at the national level, there's a significant financial reward. So keep that in mind. But again, thank you for the opportunity of being able to present Kelly with this award for her work at Patrick Henry Elementary. Thank you. Any questions, Uptee? All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you have a good chance to go to Patrick Henry, second floor, her class is, Ms. Williams is really making a difference. And this is only her, what year is this for you teaching? Only her fifth year of teaching. But everything in her room is a seasoned teacher when you go in and check this out. Good chance, drop our load.
Next, we have the School Board Appreciation Month. That's what all these nice things are here. So first of all, thank you to all the schools for something. It's very humbling to, it's like an extra Christmas, and we do appreciate it. And we appreciate, I think we all would say that we enjoy volunteering and doing this for you all and serving our school system. So thank you very much. Do you have to say something? Okay, okay, sorry.
There is no saying about the countless number of hours that school boards spend. It's really tremendous and the hours during the weeks of just communicating and text messages and calls. And I'd like to thank our school board for being a great board. This is one, in my 10 years, this is one of the best boards that we've ever had. And that's saying a lot, because I don't say that for all of them. This is one because they're compassionate about kids. And that's to me what it's all about. When you love kids, everything that takes place in order. And this group cares a lot about kids. Anything I bring to them, they're always wanting to know how is it going to affect kids and their teachers? And so it's a compassionate board that cares. And I'm just proud to be able to work with it. So we have certificates for them, okay? And starting with Ms. Yvonne Givens. Mr. Mike Williamson. Ms. McKeel Blackwell. Ms. Kathy Carter. It's in the mail. And Ms. Anne A. So if we could, this time, let's take a photo. Mr. Tony Jones, of course, is on the phone. So if we could get a group photo and just a round of applause for that. I want to thank all the schools for the wonderful gifts.
Do you want us to hold up the certificate in the photo? Do you want the certificate in the photo?
We can.
I mean, that's what you were just saying.
I'm not good with that.
Ms. Callie's just said yes. Listen to her.
I'm going to do it all when it gets in trouble. I want to thank all the schools for the wonderful gifts. If you can't for me to get off my thigh, I'll be alone.
Everybody, one, two, three. Thank you. If everybody wants to kind of stand here for a second, we have a presentation ourselves in the next part. It is also clerk and deputy clerk appreciation month. So the school board, we have Bogeyda's gifts. And we want to say thank you because we know you always have a snack during the day. And also, when you're doing your duties, you want to give out a snack to get people to come along and so we want to present these to you all.
You haven't really earned this yet.
Well... And we have a certificate for Ms. Yanni. And they haven't had a chance to put yours in the system yet, but when they do, we will give you yours. So, but we don't have anybody to take pictures. Do we need to take pictures?
Oh, Lord.
I hope Shona would, Shona would, if you mind taking a photo, honey.
We can take selfies.
I don't know, I've come looking at the certificate. So we are hoping to get you all in the middle. You all, the honors, you all get in the middle. Thank you very much. All right, moving along to consent agenda. We need a motion to accept the amendments from the public hearing on January 27, along with the amendments from our regular January board meeting on January 13.
I said move.
Yeah, Mr. Williamson. Thank you. And then we'll need to individually vet, since Mr. Jones is not here with us.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All right, I need a motion to accept the financial report as it's been presented.
It was included in that.
Oh, it wasn't included in that, never mind, roll it on then. Okay. Action agenda. We were given the proposed final draft last month to look at, and we have the academic calendar for next year. Okay, Dr. Tally?
Okay. This is the academic proposed calendar for 2026. Again, the superintendent's advisor submitted a lot of input. We thank all the schools, we emailed me your thoughts. And because it's not Christmas, everybody can get everything they wanted. But we did make the biggest adjustment and the biggest request was actually was to move that work day. And when I say that work day, everybody knows what that is because everybody wrote that. And so we were able to do that on a check with Angela on our days to make sure our semester ends when it's supposed to and that we have enough instructional days. And people don't understand that it's not a matter of cutting days here or adding days there. You have to make sure that you have a complete school year in case of the weather that you all excited about having tomorrow comes in. Usually, we don't have that issue. Thank you, Alma, this is really real. But usually, we don't have that issue. Some years, you don't have any. And you don't have to make any adjustments. Some years, it looks like this one's going full of action. So we'll have to make sure, because especially at the high school level, that the students that get their required hours in. We do go to school longer than anyone else in the state. And that's exciting because of the fact that we have more leave-wise. When we get to the end to have, what is it, 990?
990 clock hours.
Right, 990 clock hours. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility. So this is the calendar, and it's up to the board. Your pleasure.
Any questions or comments? Okay, then I need a motion to accept the calendar as it's been presented to us for the school year 2026. So then?
So.
All right.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I will ask one question if I can, not necessarily this calendar. I know that we have, as a former teacher, I would say we have been fortunate to have some snow days so far this year. As Ms. Baller's smiling. Are we okay or are we getting close to our, are we okay with all our built-in?
Doctor, thank you.
We are. I keep a spreadsheet, I've got it put in for tomorrow if finally we're both come on to do that.
And what we do, Alma's just overjoyed right there.
She's just vibrating. I hope the people in there will see what she's doing.
This is really scary. But what we do is after we miss a day, the next time, yeah. Angela gives us an update, I don't know how many days, so we don't wait to the end of the year. We're tracking them all the time. She's tracking them all the time. So right now, we're in good shape. Unless we miss two more weeks, then it might not be as exciting. But yeah, right now, we're in great shape because of the month and time of the year.
Okay, moving on to number 6.2, School Wellness Plan, presented by Dr. Preston and Ms. Williams.
Good evening. I am here this afternoon requesting permission to make a change to our current wellness policy as well as our triannual report. This finding was noted during our school nutrition federal audit that took place early December. It was noted that we were not on the same triennial, the Virginia Triannual Assessment Schedule that they are requesting that we get on. So I'm just here to ask permission, now that it is a policy, it is posted, if we are able to go back and make that revision. So what we have posted under the triannual report is for 2020 to 2023. But what we need to have posted is 2024 to 2027. No wording change or anything, just the date.
So you would like for us to make a motion that we change the date on the triannual plan for school nutrition?
Yes, so that it is in line with the Virginia Triannual Assessment Schedule.
Any questions? All right, then I'll make the motion that we make that change so that we're in compliance.
I see.
Okay.
Ms. Givens?
Yes.
Mr. Williamson?
Yes.
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll submit that to DOE.
Thank you. Thank you, we appreciate that.
All right, Superintendent's Report.
Okay, thank you. Again, I'm honored to be here. Again, from my condolences to the families. I've never seen a year, and I can remember this is year forty-seven, going into fourth grade, where we've had so much tragedy down here. I want to thank all of our teachers for being so compassionate. Our counselors, Ms. Preston, her staff counselors in every building for being there. Even our staff members, not counselors, but they came and were there to talk to young people in the cub. Again, I just say thank you. You don't get this in the area division. You don't get this everywhere. But I know our children feel loved. And again, we keep them in our thoughts. Again, for the less family who throughout the years have donated so much. I remember Liz being in, the daughter being in my class, brilliant student. And I remember the family doing a lot of things, some things that were mentioned, some that were not. Again, but we appreciate them so much. Went to two homecoming, coming to basketball games at middle school, which is very nice, to have the eighth graders come out in recognition. Also, at the high school basketball homecoming, which is also very nice. Congratulations to all the students and the parents in Portland. Of course, we celebrated Dr. Martin Luther King holiday, and I saw a lot of things in the building. And thank you for doing that, setting his life and his legacy. We live on. Nothing can change that, the rewards, the things that he's done. Just worldwide Nobel Peace Prize winner. Again, his peace volume. If you ever get a chance to go, we went last summer, and go see his site, his church and his house, which is now a museum, and his store, and his new church. And the senator who is now pastor's there, who's a senator from Georgia. Just loving folks. If you ever get a chance, take your people through Atlanta, go see that, you'll enjoy. We had a good school meeting. Again, just giving you an update of that CTE after hours. I want to thank Shana, her staff. It was a beautiful outing. Some of you came and would appreciate that. Business community came. They were elated to see the things that our kids are doing, running their own student-led businesses. And it was just very good, well-attended. A lot of media there. I want to thank the staff, our CTE staff, enjoying their staff for all of this. The public came for the budget. I want to thank the board for approving the budget. We really decided by met with our city manager, Ms. Rita, and she's very pleased with the budget. I want to thank again our entire staff, because they all had input into this. Again, School Board Appreciation Day. And we just really appreciate you and our school clerks who do so much of the paperwork for us. Our SAC team, your burger SAC meeting, I thank you. Do not prohibit your teachers from bringing questions, but let them bring questions to us. We want that. We have a burger group, and we're very frank and we're very upfront with you. So I encourage you to continue to send the hard questions. And then continue to let them speak to your staff. Make room and time for them, because it's a two-way conversation between the superintendent and teachers. And I want that communication to stay open, as well as central office staff. Counselors appreciation week. Weekend setting up for our counselors, especially at a time like what we're facing going on this month. It really should be the cord, Dr. World, and other staff from other schools. They're coming, and we'll be giving him some assistance in the fall. I'm really excited about that. He's excited. Dr. Tucker's excited. We'll be getting more. We need to spend more time counseling students, you know? It really is about students. I know it gets boring to keep saying, but it is. And a lot of times, we're so busy with the paperwork and the other familiarities, and we have things happening with kids that we don't get a chance to talk about. And sadly enough, we have things, and anybody who's been in education long enough to know, we have things in our community happening that are being brought into our schools. And they don't start in schools. And it may end there, or may, you know, flourish there. But I want to thank all the teachers, counselors, and people who are trying to guide young people in the right direction, because we are influenced by where we live. There's no end, and there's a better body. Kids are always impacted by the environment. Again, we're doing some work, some hard things on additions to our track and new gym, community gym. We're really excited about it. We should have some sketches in a few weeks. And I'm really excited about the lay of land and what's gonna happen. For us to see this coming to fruition within the next three years, it's gonna be a joy. And I know you waited hard. This will be year fifty for me, and I can't wait to see that happen. The young people in the community here will have a gym. We're folk walking floor. The community could come in with our charge, with your charge. You know, classes will be able to take place on weekends. And even if I'm retired, I plan to come over and volunteer my time. I've also got police and firemen, other people said that they will come and volunteer some services too, as we do games and stuff. Also do some math too, and writing. So I'm really excited. This will be a staple of this community, and we'll help young people, because it's all about that. It's always about helping young people. And for that, I thank you.
All right, matters from the board. And do you have anything for us?
Do we?
Ms. Kathy?
Ms. Mikiya?
Mr. Mike? Mr. Jones, do you have anything for us?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Bye, everybody.
I do want to give a brief report about Governor's School. We did meet in January. That was the time for the new director to present her budget for next year. And she gave us a brief verbal information about what that was gonna look like. She was gonna wait till she got some more information. And then actually, she was waiting on our calendar, Henry County's calendar, before we can vote on all of those things. She did say that she was meeting beginning that evening. And the next two after that was students from Martinsville, Henry County, and as well as Pennsylvania, Anne Danville, about coming into the program. The rising, will be the rising juniors for next year. She felt like there was so far a lot of interest, so hopefully, we can continue that going. And now that we have testing and a few things to do, the high school for those folks, and I hope that that all goes well and they can get invited into Governor's School. Again, the business after hours was very nice. Thank you to Ms. Hans again and Ms. Callie for putting that together and for having our students there. They were very well spoken. Having been to a lot of those over the years, it was nice to see them leading and taking the lead where online, you know, the other businesses host and talk about their business. It was nice to see our students doing the same thing and having that ability. And thank you to the media for coming and covering that so well. We do appreciate that. I've had a chance to go to several games and tournaments lately, and it was nice to see that we were hosting the wrestling tournament for the district. It was well-attended, and Dr. Callie came out and we saw several. I'm really surprised and pleased and proud of our teachers. You know, sometimes things have changed, and the world's changed, and everybody's so busy. You know, you don't see or hear a lot about teachers coming out and seeing their students. I was really surprised how many high school teachers were there, cheering on their students, supporting them, taking photos. It just did my heart good, and it's nice to see that. And I'm very proud of them for doing that. And that tells you what a family that Martinsville City Public Schools tries to be with those children. And so props to all the teachers for all you do. We appreciate you, we hear you. We know that, you know, you have a lot going on, but we appreciate you. And that's why tomorrow, I hope you get a good day, so rest and enjoy that snow. And I know Ms. Waller's over there hoping to extend a Wednesday. The smile on her face says she's hoping for a Wednesday too. I don't want it to go too far personally, as a business owner, because Valentine's, we had all this stuff planned. But we'll hope that you get another day out of it too, Ms. Waller. Reminder of dates. We have those for you. February seventeenth is a student holiday, not a teacher holiday. That is a work day, and I'm sure we have lots of important things to accomplish. Also, this month is CTE Awareness Month, so we want to again say thank you to our teachers and everyone who's working in the CTE program. Dr. Callie mentioned that it's National School Counselor Appreciation Month. It is also Black History Month, and that is very important. And I hope our schools are talking about that as well. March fourth and fifth are fast-tracked. I know that Martinsville City Public Schools will have a booth again. Is that accurate? Okay. All right, and then our next school board meeting is March tenth. Any unregistered citizen comments? All right. Communications, Ms. Smith?
This is Court. We all look at him, he's way down. You want to move on to that's another.
While we're doing that, then I guess it's time to read our little information about closed sessions. Mr. Williamson?
Pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A, Dakota, Virginia, I move that the board convene into closed session for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of the evaluation, employment, assignment, and reassignment of employees, excuse me, of the Martinsville City Schools as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Very much. I still have six.
Ms. Gibbons?
Yes.
Ms. Williamson?
Yes.
Blackwell?
Yes.
Ms. Carter? Mr. Jones?
All right, thank you. Be safe, enjoy your day. Stay warm.